All right, that's an idea.
All right, it is 7:30 on Tuesday, September 3rd, and I call the meeting of the Brainerd City Council to order. Tony, please call the roll.
O'Day.
Here.
Stunich.
Here.
Terry.
Here.
Stingline.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Chesak.
Here.
Bevins.
Here.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I know, and I have the matching socks, too.
All right, item four is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Mr. Chair, Mr. President.
Mr. Chesak.
I'd like to amend the agenda, move the item of the, on the PNF Airport Levy Discussion down beneath the new business item of the airport discussion, so it'd be right after that as a separate item.
Perfect. Mr. O'Day, do you have any problem moving the approval of the amended agenda?
Nope.
Mr. Stunich.
No, second.
PNF Chair Johnson, okay with this?
Yes.
All right, we have a motion to approve an amended agenda, we have a second. Is there any other discussion? Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. We have an agenda. Item five is the consent calendar. Notice to the public, all matters listed are considered routine by the council and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless good cause is shown prior to the time the council votes on the motion to be adopted by rule call. Is there a move to adopt the consent calendar?
So move, Johnson.
Motion by Johnson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Stingline, any discussion? Hearing none, Tony, please call the roll.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunich.
Yes.
Terry.
Yes.
Stingline.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Chesak.
Yes.
Bevins.
Yes, we have a consent calendar. Item six, as council committee reports, item six A is the Personnel and Finance Committee Chairman, Gabe Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President, we had seven, we're down to six items on the agenda, first of which is ratify the hiring of line workers John Simmons and Travis Donnelly, and the motion is to ratify the hiring of John Simmons and Travis Donnelly for the line worker positions. Further, that Mr. Simmons be placed on step two of the 2023 line worker wage grid, and that Mr. Donnelly be placed on step four of the 2023 line worker wage grid, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion by Johnson, a second by Stunich, to ratify the hiring of the line workers. Any discussion? Chairman Johnson.
Yeah, thank you, we, these are budgeted positions right now, there are four, before this, there were four open line worker positions, we received 10 applications, four of which met the minimum qualifications and were interviewed, we extended these two job offers, and we're gonna go back and try to find two more linemen to fill out the contingent.
Thank you, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. That motion carries, thank you, please proceed.
Thank you, next up is some resignation of a couple CSOs, and the motion is to accept Mr. John Unger's resignation effective September 4, 2024, and Mr. Tyler Heinlein's resignation as of August 22, 2024. Further, to authorize staff to begin the hiring process to backfill one of the community service officer positions, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion by Johnson, a second by Terry, any discussion?
Mr. Bevins.
Mr. Chesak.
Quick question.
Sure.
What's the length of time we usually have community service officers serve the city of Brainerd?
It's, I defer to Chris.
Maybe.
Chris, or the chief? Chief, do you?
It usually varies, up to two years is the maximum, usually why these individuals are attending Central Lakes College, that's when they're employed by us.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. That motion carries, thank you, please proceed.
Okay, next up is the reconsideration of the Minnesota State Delegation Agreement. And the motion is to reinstate Scott Sedusky's building inspection delegation contract, and further to allow Mr. De Seth to participate in irrelevant inspections with Scott Sedusky within 30 miles of Brainerd that aid in delegation experience, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion by Johnson, a second by Stunich, Chairman Johnson.
So we took action recently to terminate Mr. Scott Sedusky's inspection contract, but we've since learned some other things that I think the best course forward, and staff's recommendation for the best course forward at this time, is to reinstate the contract with Mr. Sedusky, and have Mr. De Seth learn under him a bit.
Thank you, any further discussion?
Mr. Bevins.
Mr. Chesak.
Yeah, I was wondering if, maybe a staff question, but when we hire the position of our building official, is this, this certification obviously isn't a requirement, is that correct?
Yes, the certification's not a requirement, it was just a desired qualification.
And then, so, in order to achieve this, it's gonna take several years, then, is how I understand it?
That's typical, from what I learned from our current contractor, Mr. Sedusky, it did take him 11 years to achieve this.
Wow, okay.
Thank you, any further discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion, we have a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. That motion carries, please proceed.
Okay, next up is a wage resolution for the city administrator department heads and utility division managers in non-supervisory positions. Motion is to adopt the attached wage resolution setting the July 1, 2024 wages for the city administrator, department heads, and applicable municipal utility division managers and non-union supervisory positions, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion by Johnson, a second by Terry, Chairman Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President, this is what we have been intending to do all along, is give all of our employees the same, across the board, living increase. We had settled, or we had set the wages for the union, the non-union department heads, before we had settled our collective bargaining agreements. With the collective bargaining agreements, there was an additional 2.25% that was given on July 1st. This resolution gives that to our non-union workforce.
Thank you, any further discussion? Hearing none, all, this is a resolution, Tony, please call the roll.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunich.
Yes.
Terry.
Yes.
Stingline.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Chesak.
Yes.
Bevins.
Yes, that resolution passes, please proceed.
Okay, next up was the 2025 library request, we had a split vote coming out of committee, I'll hand it over to, well, Councilmember Stunich, since he made, he actually made the, did you make the motion? Carry it, Stunich?
You did, it's your number.
Councilmember Terry.
All right, Councilmember Terry.
Go ahead.
All right, so during PNF, we had the discussion of the library increase. 2024 library levy was at 149,778. The library is requesting a new levy amount of 152,784, which is an increase of $2,996. The impact on the overall preliminary levy would be an increase of approximately .04%, with this wage, or, no, with this increase in funds. So I had made the motion to approve the $2,996 increase for the library.
We have a motion by Terry, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Stunich, any discussion?
Speak to the motion?
Um, I, I was thinking that the $2,996 is a minimal amount that they're requesting, I think it's reasonable. We haven't had an increase for the library board in quite some time. This money will go toward operating expenses, it will not impact the hours of operation. They're doing the best they can, I sit as the liaison on the library board, they're doing the best they can to stretch their funds, and so the $2,996 will just minimally help stretch those funds a little further.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, and I was comfortable with holding them, the library levy in the city of Brainerd flat again this year. The citizens of Brainerd pay significantly more than any of the county residents for this library, among other things, but also included in the budget, like, we're talking $3,000, but also included in the capital budget is $426,000 that is going to the library, right, they say half of our money goes to the building costs, half goes to the operating costs, but then, when they need a new roof, they just get another $425,000 anyway, so I don't, it doesn't make sense to me, and I think holding them flat with a very generous, well over the statutory minimum levy, is fair.
Thank you, any further discussion?
Mr. Bevins.
Mr. Chesak.
The statutory minimum levy, can somebody tell me what that dollar amount is?
Anybody from staff able to?
And what's the total ask, right now? That is, is that including the, not including the $2,996?
That is including.
In, okay.
So the current motion is to set the library's preliminary levy at $152,784.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? The motion is to approve the levy with the increase, and has been seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign.
Aye.
And it passes, please proceed.
Thank you, next up, we had a unanimous commission vote, and that is for the EDA levy, and the motion is to set the preliminary 2025 EDA levy at $186,812, and I so move.
Motion by Johnson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Terry, any discussion, Chairman Johnson?
This, this number is holding the EDA flat to what their 2024 levy was, you know, and I spoke on behalf of the EDA, I'm on, I'm on the EDA, Mike, you are, Kelly, you are, we're doing good work, and it's a good organization, and, you know, maybe they could use more money, but I think it would be more helpful if they could tell the council what this additional $27,800 would go towards next year, instead of just hoping to get it, and then maybe deciding what to do with it, so I think it's safe and fair to hold them flat this year, and, and see what they have next year.
Thank you, any further discussion?
I got a question on the EDA levy. What kind of salaries does that levy cover? How much?
It's a contract with the city of about 35, 32, 20,000, somebody tell me.
It's less than $20,000, I think it's like 18, 17 or $18,000, contract with the city to cover the city administrator, myself, and community development director, Kramfix wages.
Okay, and then, so, that's your, that's operations or labor, correct? And then, and then the rest of the money typically goes for, like,
Outside consultants, play deck, and whatnot.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion?
I'll just say.
Mr. O'Day.
I'll just say I agree in holding this flat, I think there's nothing pressing that the EDA's trying to push forward next year. This does make it more difficult, say the ask goes to the maximum next year, it's more of an increase than it would be this year, but I think holding it flat right now, and putting the brakes on that, is okay.
Thank you, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of holding that EDA's levy flat, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign, motion carries, please proceed.
End of report.
Thank you, and if you watched the beginning, the airport commission levy will be moved to the airport discussion later in the meeting. We're now on item 6B, Safety and Public Works Committee Chairman, Mike O'Day.
Thank you, Mr. President, we had 10 items tonight. First item was event application for a concert in the park. Motion coming out of committee was to approve the attached event application, and I so move.
Second. We have a motion by O'Day, a second by Chesak, any discussion? Chairman O'Day.
Thank you, yeah, this is a new partnership formed between Community Action and Jackpine Brewery to put on a concert at Lyman P. White Park on September 26th, from 5 to 9 p.m. The new, the new idea here is for Jackpine to get their products out there, so there will be beer and other alcoholic beverages sold at this one, but it should be a fun event.
Thank you, any further discussion?
Question.
Chairman Johnson.
Do we know who the musical act is?
Seth Dowd.
Oh, sweet, I love him.
He's great.
Thank you, anything else? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign, motion carries, please proceed.
Thank you, item number two was approving a streetlight request at the intersection of Woodland Hills Lane and Crestview Lane, and a recommendation coming out of committee was to recommend to relocate the existing streetlight from 120 feet north to 120, to the south side of the intersection, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion by O'Day, a second by Stingline, any discussion? Chairman O'Day.
So this is, this is a streetlight request that anybody in the city can submit. The complaint was that the intersection was too dark, this closest streetlight was obviously 120 feet away, and it was attracting some bad behavior, in their opinion, so this should light up the intersection better, and actually bring it closer to our streetlight policy that now exists, that did not exist when this was put in. The option of moving the light rather than adding a light saves us about $1,000, it's about $1,200 to move it, so.
Thank you, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Thank you, item number three was a discussion on a resolution for the no parking signs on Gillis Avenue, and motion coming out of committee was to adopt the attached resolution, removing on-street parking from Gillis Avenue on the northbound side from Washington Street to the alley, and I so move.
Second. We have a motion by O'Day, a second by Chesak, any discussion, Chairman O'Day.
So since Duncan opened up, we have had some stacking of cars in that area, when cars were parked along the curb, they were pushing that line of cars out into the opposite, well, the southbound lanes, so essentially blocking traffic. Staff put these signs up as a precaution, knowing that we were going to talk about it at council. Since that time, we've had no issues with that, we figure just keep it as is, if it becomes an issue in one way or another, we can always change it later.
Thank you, any further discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Bevins.
Mr. Chesak.
I never asked this question earlier, but with this resolution, do we not just put up the permanent signs of no parking? Is that what happens?
Now, Mr. Dean.
The signs out there, they're essentially permanent signs, so we can just leave them in place.
Nothing changes?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, Tony, please call the roll.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunich.
Yes.
Terry.
Yes.
Stingline.
Yes.
Johnson.
No.
Chesak.
Yes.
Bevins.
Yes, that resolution is adopted, please proceed.
Thank you, number four, we had approval of Buffalo Hills Gully Memorandum of Understanding Amendment, and recommendation coming out of committee was to approve the attached MOU amendment with Crow Wing Soil and Water Conservation District, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion by O'Day, a second by Stingline, any discussion, Chairman O'Day.
This is the agreement that Crow Wing Soil and Water Conservation District is giving us $35,000 towards the project that we had discussed last time.
Thank you, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign, motion carries, please proceed.
Thank you, item number five, we had just a discussion item on our street sweeping projects and street sweeping information. We did not have a motion on this, on this item, as it was just discussion. We learned a lot about how much we're spending, and how much time we're spending on street sweeping, and how expensive street sweeping equipment is. We had a gentleman request, a smaller street sweeper for the sidewalks, to keep sand off for pedestrian traffic and bike traffic. Turns out those machines are almost as expensive as our two street sweeper machines that we have currently, so it's something that we can look, look at in the future, not at this time, but we also talked about paying more attention to those, those areas that get a little more dirty, a little more sandy, and, and doing more spot cleaning as we go forward with our existing equipment.
Thank you, any comments on the street sweeping issue? Please proceed.
Thank you. Item number six was a discussion on right-of-way vacations. Motion coming out of committee was to go with option one, where staff will investigate if there are public purpose, a public purpose for these areas. If none, prepare appropriate documentation and process for the council to consider vacation of the right-of-way by council direction, I so move.
Second. We have a motion by O'Day, a second by Chesak, any discussion? Chairman O'Day.
Yeah, so this came up because Jack's House inquired about putting up a sign closer to the highway, turns out the way that's plotted was for a frontage road, which we're probably never going to put there, but right by there, where you can see in the green by their entry is where they want to put a bigger sign, so. In looking at this, this is technically city property right now, there are some other areas in town that staff already pointed out that we could vacate, add on to private property owners, ownership, get back on the tax rolls if it makes much of a difference at all, but it also takes us off the liability of anything that's on there, or gets out of the way for people that do want to develop something there, so.
Thank you, any further discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Bevins.
Mr. Chesak.
Yeah, I, I think this is a, I think a very good suggestion by staff to move forward at this, it seems to be, we're doing work that doesn't really help anybody, and it just gives our staff extra work, it seems like, on some of these locations where it doesn't really have a good public use, so I'm glad we're doing this.
Thank you, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign, motion carries, please proceed.
Thank you, item number seven was a discussion on the Rosewood Alley sewer replacement cost. Motion coming out of committee was to replace the section of failing sewer main based on the proposal received in 2024, and I so move.
Second. We have a motion by O'Day, a second by Chesak, any discussion, Chairman O'Day.
Yeah, we had a sinkhole pointed out in this alleyway, basically the sewer's collapsing, I don't know if we have any pictures of it handy, but it is a very old sewer that we can't go in and line it, it's, it's too, too narrow, it has to be at least six inches, we only have, it has to be eight inches wide, and we only have a four-inch wide pipe there, but it's not gonna get better on its own, we have money in reserves, that's what that money is for, so we're gonna go ahead, and if you guys are in agreement, fix it as soon as possible.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign, motion carries, please proceed.
Thank you, next was.
It was like 50, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, wasn't it like 50?
60.
It was about $60,000.
Okay, just for the record, thank you.
For, for one block of, of sewer, sanitary sewer.
Excellent.
Just for your information.
Mm-hmm.
Number eight, we had a discussion on the H Street detour route during the Trunk Highway 210 project. Motion coming out of committee was to grant permission to staff for the H Street possible detour route, and I so move.
Second. We have a motion by O'Day, a second by Chesak, any discussion?
Obviously, we have a, a big project coming up, and there's gonna be a lot of different detours throughout the project as we hit different areas in the project. This is, this is during the 10 weeks that they'll be working on the double roundabout area, you can see on that picture right there. Ideally, we don't like to send a round, or a detour through residential neighborhoods, but there's really just no way, no great way to do this one. H Street is a little wider, set up better for a little bit more traffic, though not ideal, but this would not include truck traffic.
Thank you, any, any further discussion? I, okay, go ahead, Mr. Chesak.
Yeah, I just hope that the citizens will allow, give us, and be patient, and this is gonna be a, a big deal, it's gonna be a headache for a lot of people, and it's, it just, get it done, move on, hopefully it doesn't cause too many problems when this finally does come, get, come into, the project gets identified, and everybody knows what to prepare for, so.
Thank you. I, I just received one comment on this, and that would be, and I certainly support the motion, but that would be to send truck traffic out 18 to County 25, as the major, as the two major roads to continue on 210 East, so. I, I don't know if that's feasible, but it was a comment, I said I would pass it on. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign, motion carries, please proceed.
Thank you, number nine was another discussion, asking for direction regarding the Trunk Highway 210 Lum Park Pedestrian Bridge Project. Coming out of committee, our recommendation is to decline progressing further with the bridge project at this time, inform MINDOT that the grant would not be utilized, and continue exploring other funding opportunities when available, I so move.
All right, go ahead.
Second.
We have a motion by O'Day, a second by Stingline, any discussion? Chairman O'Day.
So at this time, that grant we received, potentially it would be about a $1.3 million award, but this project is probably pushing more between five and six million. There's too big of a gap, too much of a risk and liability to put on our taxpayer citizens without securing funding at this time, so knowing that there's a time limit and time constraint on this, we're, we're just gonna let them know that this probably won't go into use for us.
Mr. Bevins.
Mr. Chesak.
I, I just had a question on the motion, I think it was to stop working on the project, or something to that effect?
I think it was item two.
Okay.
Decline progressing further with the bridge project at this time, inform MINDOT that grant would not be utilized, and continue exploring funding opportunities when available. Am I correct, Mr. O'Day?
That's what I had, that's what I had.
I just wanted to double-check that. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Chairman Johnson.
It's a process question. I mean, when you deny, you apply for grant funds, you receive them, and you get awarded, and you say, nah, changed our mind. Does that have any effect on future grant applications?
I don't know anybody in staff.
Like, if Brainerd's just now becoming a flake.
Yeah. I know it didn't in the past, because we've declined grants before.
It can play into when the review committee is looking at future grant applications, but it's not part of the actual review process itself. So it shouldn't be actually considered, but-
But people have feelings.
Yeah. They want to see a project that they fund come to fruition, so they don't want to see funds turned back. So they will think twice about that same project being applied for, for grant funding in the future for that specific grant.
Thank you. They'll just give us more next time.
Ms. Stingline.
So I'm part of the ATP that awarded that grant, and there were concerns expressed at the time about whether we could actually get the money spent. And basically, the, they gave it to us because we were the, like, the last application that they were awarding. So I don't think they're going to be surprised by this.
So they already don't like us.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Chairman O'Day.
So as much as I want to see this go forward, the other, the other problem is we've, we've applied for quite a few other grants, and we've been turned down by quite a few other grants. But they're all aware that this is a possibility. Right now, without having that trail connect to the Kiuna Trail, it really doesn't make sense for those, a lot of those grants. But when that does connect, and the pedestrian traffic increases across our highway right there, I think that's when you're going to see a bigger push for this. So that's just what I see going forward.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you. Our final item was just direction on active code enforcement cases. This one had to do with 917 Seventh Street South, lawn grass, and recommendation was abatement of the property. I so move.
Second. We have a motion by O'Day, a second by Chesak. Any discussion?
Yeah, they're going to put up a fence to hide it.
Right.
I've got a question.
Mr. Chairman Johnson.
I was here for the committee meeting, and it sounds like the previous owner now has passed away. So is this earmarked to be put in the vacant building registry? Or do you want to wait for it to be vacant for a year? I forget how that works.
Yep, this one would be one that would be put on there as well.
Okay.
I think it's thirty days, right?
So the vacant building registry, they, they would have a potential opportunity to sign up for a restoration plan of the building. The building itself probably doesn't have, I'd have to take a closer look at it, have a lot of issues. Certainly, the lawn is an issue. So we'll still go, I'll review this one and go through that process.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Please proceed.
And a report.
Thank you very much. We will move on to item seven, which is unfinished business. Item seven A is a call for applicants. We're turning it over to Mayor Bedell.
Holy Hannah. I'll tell you what, we are getting low on these commissions just in time for the new year where we can just add a bunch back on. So if you're interested to be a part of the city of Brainerd, don't know where to get started, we've got commissions you can be a part of. Charter commission, two terms expiring 2026, two terms expiring 2025. Transportation Advisory Committee, two terms expiring 2026. The Economic Development Authority also has one term expiring 2026.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And as council president, I have two terms on the parking commission, one term to expire in 2026, and one term to expire in 2028. Item seven B is discussion of the tree committee. Mr. Kramback, what would you like to discuss on the tree committee?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. So this was brought up at a few council meetings. Section 1400.03 of the city code contains the definitions that are associated with this section of code. Subdivision seven defines tree committee as a seven-member committee appointed by the mayor. The duties of the tree committee are not defined in city charter or chapter 14. As there is no defined role for the tree committee, staff does not recommend forming a tree committee at this time. However, city council would like to proceed with the committee, the following actions could be reviewed by the tree committee. First would be placement of budgeted trees, not the exact location, but identifying which parks and streets and general areas should be planted with each year's tree budget. This would be more of a recommendation for the park trees, as the park decides that part of it. And just to note, the city council budget is twenty-five for, twenty-five thousand for park trees as well as street trees each year. A second thing they could do is recommend revisions to the tree policy or trap chapter 14 of the city code when necessary. We did just review this, so probably doesn't need to be done very soon, but those would be two possible things that they could review. So staff is looking for direction on how to proceed.
Excellent. My recommendation would be to dissolve the tree committee.
Second.
I can't make a motion. Let's get it over with. Pull the trigger, Kevin.
I may make a motion. We dissolve the tree committee for lack of interest.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Stunick, a second by Terry. Any discussion? Mr. Mayor.
I would like to say that this is not an indication that the citizens of Brainerd are not interested in trees. I'm not hearing that from any of our citizens. However, I do support the dissolving of one said tree.
Although the tree committee that's been in place, which was really just liaison Johnson, has been doing one bang-up job.
I will add that to my-
Chairman Johnson.
As the sole member of the city of Brainerd Tree Committee, I understand the reservation of continuing on. But I would say the citizens are interested. We haven't had it, and the mayor's calling it out, asking for applicants. If he asked, people who love trees as much as I do would apply and-
This is true, and I did ask for that to happen.
But that said, I'm okay with dissolving, because there really is nothing for a tree committee to do.
Does anybody have any aspirin? Thank you. We have a motion. We've got a second. We've discussed the living heck out of it. Is anybody else with anything serious to add about the tree committee?
Happy old trees.
Thank you. Hearing none. All in favor of dissolving the tree committee for now, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Let's move on to, I thought we better find something for Mr. Kramback to do. All right, let's move on now to the update on the airport ownership, structure, and levy. This is submitted by Nick Broyles, our city administrator. I know Mr. Chesak has some comments as well, but we'll start with our administrator, Broyles.
Thank you, Mr. President. City council has directed staff to do a couple of things regarding the airport. First, explore options to have Crow Wing County, pardon me, take over full ownership of the airport and zero out the city's levy. Second, short of a change of ownership, exhaust options to maximize efficiency and service delivery by refining the structural foundations of the airport, such as IT, HR facilities, finance, and legal. Third, explore options to eliminate the airport levy for Brainerd citizens, or at a minimum, ensure they are not double taxed. Of these three, option one is, is off the table. There's an email in your packet from the county administrator indicating that the county has no interest in changing the ownership, ownership structure as it is today. Staff intends to continue to work on options two and three in coordination with Crow Wing County and the airport director. Collectively, we would like to provide recommendations via a letter to the Crow Wing County Commission, city council, and the airport commission for their consideration. So what I'm asking for is a motion to direct staff to, one, work with the county and the airport director to develop recommendations regarding future structure of airport IT facilities, HR finance, legal, functional areas. Two, integrate those recommendations into a formal letter for consideration by the city council, county commission, and the airport commission. And three, exhaust avenues to either provide Brainerd citizens relief from any airport levy, or minimally to ensure they are not double taxed with respect to the airport. I've also included in the packet some history. Councilman Chesak asked for some information as far as the levy. He also asked for some information regarding the functional areas. If you recall, staff did put together a PowerPoint presentation a few months ago with some recommendations. That would be our starting point and our baseline to enter into negotiations with the county and the airport commission, as we draft up a letter requesting whatever course of action we request. Pending your questions, that's all I have.
Any questions of staff or comments on Mr. Broyles' recommendations? And I'll start with Mr. Chesak, because I, I know you've added to this issue.
Well, I think Administrator Broyles has covered pretty much a lot of what I was hoping to discuss. I, I think the big issue, at least for me, is the levy, and it's a, it's a shared levy right now. But when we look at the airport, it's a facility that, based on all the information we have, it's an asset to the entire area, not just even Crow Wing County and/or the city of Brainerd. It's, it's a regional airport. You know, I mean, you get people that benefit from it in Cass County, and Aiken, and Morrison, and parts unknown beyond. And so when the levy is split, essentially, as it is now, between the city and the county, and that's where the double taxation comes in, or it's twice taxed, I think is a better way to put it. And if this, if the county would be willing to take over the entire levy, or the vast majority of it, it would give relief to the Brainerd taxpayers, who, if you were to say, comparing what, how the city of Brainerd taxpayers benefit to, say, the city of Baxter, who just pays their portion of the county's levy through each individual property owner, and the whole catalyst behind this, essentially, the idea of a city divesting ownership to the county was based on the fairness, or lack thereof, regarding the levy. And if the county had sole ownership, it would be a levy of all of Crow Wing County taxpayers, including Brainerd. But Brainerd then wouldn't have to levy our own taxpayers almost an equal amount. And the others, the other things that Nick brought up, my first thing I'd like to see is just, let's see where we can start with that. And I'd like to see that letter just go to the county and see what they say about the idea of perhaps taking the levy on entirely, or say ninety percent of it even, and, and get that off the table, perhaps for our meeting on the sixteenth, prior to the time we have to set our final levy, or our preliminary levy. And if we were to do that, and the county says that they're meeting coming up next Tuesday, we would be able to know on the sixteenth if we can, say, relieve ourselves of that levy for next year, that we have on, according to the PNF committee, it's being proposed tonight of roughly, I think, one hundred and fifty thousand. So if that's something, the other idea that, you know, Nick's bringing forward, I, I'm not really sure how, what Chris Schuber brought up about having the employees at the airport, that, that seems to be an important issue, to say, we, we can have some liability there with considering the airport employees as city employees. And I understand that. So I don't like to mix them so much, because I think one is far more important to know sooner than the others, at least at this next couple-week period. So I'm in favor of what Nick's proposing. However, I'd like to just keep them separated for now, and just ask the county flat out, without getting into the, the other areas of facilities, HR, IT, legal, and all that, because that seems like a structural thing, that however we move forward on that, the levy for me is the most important. And that's, I, I, I mean, I'd like to see support for that, just to put it, put it on their plate and see what they say. Ownership, obviously, they, they levy the entire county, and it relieves us. But as far as I can tell, if we were to say, county, if you're willing to take this over, we'd be very grateful if you would. We'll consider the other factors that come into play with our staff, working on finance, IT, HR, and maybe we can work something out with them to, to figure out a better program for everybody. And maybe we just keep things status quo. I don't know. And then change our legal end of it with the employees. But to move forward, I would, I would be very appreciative, and we just get that on, on their agenda for next Tuesday, which would be, be setting that here Thursday, or probably Thursday. That's, that's my idea.
I have a question, Mr. Chesak.
Yes.
If they, if they agree to this, and choose to double it, double the levy, we'd have no say in it, correct?
Not, no.
Right on. Okay. Just wanted to make sure. Just make sure that's clear, that we're not suggesting that the, what they levy, just that they administer the levy.
Exactly. And then they can determine what the airport commission is requesting, and thumbs up, or, you know, approve it, or deny, or whatever.
So theoretically, this could be a benefit to the airport. Although, the next question I have is, Mr. Johnson, as chairman of PNF, since they had this on their committee, is what is the, without making the motion, what is the recommendation?
The recommendation was another split vote, but, oh, since I'm not making the motion, I'll talk about it.
You'll get, you'll get a chance to talk about it, but I just wanted-
Yeah, but to increase it from the 2024 levy of about one hundred forty-six thousand up to a 2025 levy for the airport of one hundred fifty thousand.
Okay. So that's, that was the, that, we, that was the recommendation on a split vote out of, out of the committee, that, we haven't had any motions, and I appreciate that. Thank you. Because I want to give everybody a chance to discuss the issue. Let's, can we keep it to the levy? Not IT, not HR?
That's all I want to talk about.
Well, ask this, Mr. Chesak, and I think that's timely due to the budgeting discussion. We'll go with Karen Terry next.
With all due respect, Councilmember Chesak, I don't see the, necessarily, the county taking over the entire levy for this coming year. So I would not be in support of splitting it out. I think we skipped the first part with the levy. We moved that forward to maybe the, a discussion for next year. But for now, I think it's important that we focus on the division of the duties and responsibilities and, and get that into motion. With respect to the levy, I don't think that's going to go anywhere.
Thank you. We'll go with Mr. Stunick, our airport liaison.
I was just going to say, as airport liaison, I shadow exactly what Karen Terry said.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson, you said you had comments?
Yeah, I just, I, I think the priority for me is the same, that like, we need to figure out IT, HR, finance, legal. I think, I mean, the levy being at a hundred fifty thousand dollars is a lot. But once you start spent, having Sean spend half of his time out there for three months, that's pretty darn expensive, too. And that comes straight out of our levy, and there's no, there's no accounting for that from the airport. So I think getting that figured out before we start talking about who's administering levy, or what, is probably a priority. But I don't disagree with Jeff in that. I think that's a good idea. Let's have the county levy the entirety of the airport's funding. It makes it easier for the airport commission to only have to ask one entity each year, instead of coming to Brainerd, and we say, well, is the county increasing? And they go to the county and say, is Brainerd? It makes it easier for that commission. And then the citizens of Brainerd would be paying the same tax rate for the airport as everybody else in the county. Whereas right now, like with other institutions, we, the citizens of Brainerd pay significantly more, and I don't think that's fair.
Okay. You do understand the timing of the levy, though. So you're basically agreeing with Karen Terry, put it off into the year. Because you've got a, you've got a really short window.
I wouldn't put it off until September of 2025, Kelly.
Well, it's either now, or you have a year, because the levy's got to be set.
Yep.
Okay. Still don't quite understand what, if you're for or against?
I, I'm indifferent, and if we set the library, the, the airport preliminary levy tonight, or if we do it in two weeks, I don't think that makes a difference.
Understood. But Mr. Chesak's request is timely, very timely, because they meet, and we have to set a preliminary levy. It's, I'm working my way down there. Mr. Broyles had his hand up. We'll go to the mayor, and then you two.
Mr. Chesak's already spoke.
Yep.
Sean, can you scroll down to the ordinances? I'm looking for 305 dot nineteen, and then it's a subsection of that. So it's one of the attachments, section 305, the last one. I might ask Attorney Langle for, put him on the spot here, ask him for recommendation. Go to 305 dot one nine.
We're getting there.
We're getting closer. And then subdivision six, I think, is budget. So I'm going to, if you, if you look back, you know, there's the number one, there's the number two, and there's the items there. And this is maybe a question for Attorney Langle. I want to skip down to the next paragraph that starts with such budget shall. And it says, the third line down, "The city shall pay fifty percent of the total contribution paid into the current airport fund by the city and the county each year. If either the city council or the county board fixes its contributions at less than the amount requested by the commission, the contribution of the other shall be decreased proportionally unless the latter shall decide to pay a larger portion of the total contribution than is required by this agreement." So I guess my question for Attorney Langle is, can this body act independently and set the levy at whatever they want?
Yes. In terms of what your, under this language, you decide what your contribution's going to be. And they're making their requests to meet their budget, right? It sounds like the recommendation is that we do not go quite that high. And they're allowed to do that, which means the county's going to drop theirs, unless they decide to go higher.
Would it be also fair to say that if this body so chose, they could approve a levy that's less than fifty percent?
Yes, because if this automatically drops the other one down, it will be at fifty percent, unless they decide to go higher.
So I just want to make sure that the council is aware that, as I understand this, and I think Attorney Langle has reinforced that, the council can act independently of what the county commission approves as a levy.
Anything else?
No, sir.
Mr. Mayor, anything? Mr. O'Day?
Yeah, that, it's an interesting paragraph, but I'm just trying to process it. But I, I think I'm in agreement with Mr. Chesak on at least putting the question out there. Just the timing we're at, we still have another meeting. There's a, there's a county board meeting in between. There's nothing wrong with asking that question and holding off on setting this, this levy until we have an answer on that. And we have more time to think about it and figure out what we want to do in two weeks.
Thank you. And Tiffany Stingline.
I guess I, I don't see it going anywhere, but we can send a letter. It's not that big of a deal. But I think that the timing of this is too close to the deadline for it to be viable for this year.
Thank you. Okay, everybody understand the schools of thought here? I mean, theoretically, Mr. Chesak's suggestion could conceivably result in more money for their part, which is crazy. But it's just a matter of administering and fairness to the city of Brainerd to be, not to be double taxed. The only one that seemed to have a differing opinion was Mr. Johnson, who thought the IT was the most important, and the levy deadlines be damned. So, Mr. John, no, we all talked. I was the last one. Mr. Johnson, this is a PNF item. What's PNF's recommendation? You get to make the motion, because you did the due diligence in your committee.
Mr. Bevins?
If you choose not, hang on. If you choose not to, I know Mr. Chesak's anxious to make one. Mr. Chesak.
Well, we have one item. The PNF item comes next. We're not finished with the item we're on.
That was going to be my question. Did we combine the items or move the item?
They're separate.
I asked, Mr. Chesak asked for them to be separate.
Yeah.
Or there's a reason.
Well, we're just taking them out of order.
Well, yeah, but-
You asked that.
Right. But I, I was hoping we could finish with the item that Administrator Broyles put on, and then, then see what the airport levy just-
Mr. Broyles put a number of items on. He's numbered them, one, two, and three.
So, okay.
You asked for the levy first. Anybody, is there more to discuss on the levy?
Well-
Everybody's had a chance to talk once. Everybody's had a chance to explain their position. Would you like to do another round? Or would you like to do something else?
Well, I was hoping to make a motion coming out of this. I-
I know you were, but it was a PNF committee. I'm recognizing the chair of PNF.
Okay.
We're going to see what he has. I, I think that's fair.
That's good.
I mean, I think that would be- I mean, I think that would be the. And if it's a motion you don't like, you can vote against it. I almost think he's going to turn it over to Kara Terry, but we're going to find out. He made the motion committee. I don't know what he's going to do.
So, I mean, the. Primary procedure, Mr. Bevins. We are on item C.
This isn't the one that was on PNF. This was already on regular council.
It says, update on airport ownership structure and levy.
Right.
We're on the levy part of it.
But but again, the the PNF item got moved after this. So you're jumping ahead to that now before we're finished.
Didn't get moved after it. It got moved to a part of it. I know exactly what it was. I said, a part of this. You asked for the levy part to be first.
No, I wanted this move specifically after.
Well, you didn't get that.
That was what I asked.
Okay.
It was approved.
All right, then we're going to go to the then if if there's no objection, we'll do that second. But I don't see how we can, but we'll go see what happens. So the recommended action on this item per Mr. Chesak is to direct staff, this is the recommendation of staff, to work with the Crow Wing County and the airport director to develop recommendation regarding future structure of airport IT facilities, HR, finance, and legal functional areas, and, number two, to integrate those recommendations into a formal letter for consideration by the Brainerd City Council, Crow Wing County Commission, and Airport Commission, and three exhaust avenues to either provide Brainerd citizens relief from any airport levy or minimally to ensure that they are not double taxed with respect to the airport. That's the recommendation. Anybody can make a motion to do that or something else.
I'd I'd move to follow the city administrator's recommendations.
We have a motion by Johnson, a second by Stengline, any discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Chesak?
Yes, I I like the recommendations. However, based on the levy timeliness and as Mr. O'Day said, it doesn't hurt to ask. When we have everything on this recommendation thrown together, it takes a lot to just focus on the levy. If the county were to say next Tuesday, you know what? The city makes sense. This is what's favorable to all the Crow Wing County taxpayers, which includes Brainerd. We will take the levy under our wing, and then the other stuff is secondary until this gets taken care of. But if we have this going to the county in a letter, and they look at this and say, boy, there's a lot there, um, how do we how do we just focus on the levy at that point? Now, they they can, but there's so many other things going on there. That's why my thought would be to move that we just have the letter for now, ask them to consider having that discussion and see what they say for next for our next meeting on the 16th. So I would, as much as I appreciate all the recommendations, I would be voting no.
Excellent. Mr. Johnson?
I'll support this motion. This is what we've been working on for a almost a year now. You know, right now, we all also have a levy discussion coming up next, but this isn't related directly to the levy. This is about improving the operations at the airport and our joint powers agreement. And I think these are all three good things to continue moving forward.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, no?
So, Gabe, for clarification, do you believe that that the levy question could follow this?
It's on the agenda next.
Given the motion, though?
Yes. We still kind of set a levy.
Any further discussion? The motion is to accept staff's recommendations. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Chairman Johnson, talk to us about the levy.
Okay, thank you, Council President. I don't think I have the authority to say, well, we're not going to talk about this or we're not going to vote on it. This was business that came before the Personnel and Finance Committee meeting. The Personnel and Finance Committee took it up. We voted. It, I think, is our responsibility as a committee to bring our recommendation to the council, even if we've received new information in the few days since we've met. So since it was a split vote, I am going to pass it over to Kara to make the motion.
So I make a motion that we increase the airport levy from the 2024 amount of 146,080 to $150,000 for 2025.
I second that. We have a motion, we have a second, any discussion?
Mr. Bevins?
Mr. Chesak?
I would move to table this until the 16th of September.
We have a motion to table this until the 16th of September. Any discussion or is there a second on that motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to table this to 916. Any discussion on the timing of the table? Kara Terry?
And and the the purpose of tabling when we didn't give staff direction to see if the county would take over the 2025 levy would be?
You can only talk about the timing.
Only talk about the timing.
Then I'll vote no.
Okay. You'd rather have a different time.
I'd just rather approve it tonight.
That's funny, but that's how the motions of tabling.
Yeah.
Any further discussion on the timing of the table? Okay, so the motion is to table this to September 16th. Let's do a voice vote. Can we do that, Tony?
O'Day?
Yes.
Stunek?
No.
Terry?
No.
Stengline?
No.
Johnson?
Yes.
Chesak?
Yes.
Bevins?
I'm going to vote yes, only because I know what this is for. Okay, so this is tabled. There'll be no further discussion of this item. Let's move on to item eight, which is new business. Consider.
Well, Mr. President, you could allow further discussion.
Not after a table. I can't after a table. Can I, Tiffany?
We could talk more airport, not airport, well, not the city's levy.
Yeah.
We tabled the city's levy for the airport.
Yeah, we did. I wanted to do it the other way around, but Jeff didn't insisted that we want to. Okay, it's tabled. All right, crazy as it is, item eight is new business. Am I am I correct, Tiffany?
Hmm?
Yes, I thought so. Our parliamentarian agrees. Item 8A is consider conditional use permit amendment at 703 Oak Street to construct an outdoor playground at a current childcare facility. This is Mr. Kravik. Bring us up to speed.
Thank you, Mr. President. So this is the YMCA childcare facility that was recently remodeled. The applicant is proposing the installation of a 50-foot by 50-foot fenced-in playground area with a five-foot-high privacy fence, a permanent play structure in the playground area, and weatherproof outdoor storage boxes for all loose toys. The applicant has stated that they have done an unofficial parking assessment over the course of a few weeks. The location of the proposed playground will not interfere with the pickup or drop off of children on a daily basis. The playground will be off to the side and will not hinder any parking or backing up in the parking lot area. Just as a reminder, the childcare facility right now walks kids across the street to the YMCA play area, so this just kind of creates a safer location. So with that, the planning commission considered the CUP amendment at their August 21st meeting, conducted the public hearing, and unanimously recommended approval. And I can answer any questions.
Any questions of staff on the YMCA playground? Hearing none. We're looking for a motion to either accept staff's approval of the conditional use permit or.
I'd move to approve.
Motion by Johnson, second by Terry. Any discussion? Tiffany Stengline?
Uh, Mr. President, I will be abstaining on this as I am employed by the YMCA.
Oh, okay, don't. All right, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carries with one abstention. Next up is item 8B, the first reading of proposed ordinance 1572 prohibiting outdoor storage for crypto mining and similar uses. Mr. Kravik?
Thank you, Mr. President. So due to the sound level of concerns, the city council directed staff at their August 5th meeting to draft an ordinance that would prohibit outdoor storage for crypto mining facilities, data centers, AI centers, and similar uses. I do believe the planning commission will be looking at crypto mining facilities and potential additional language in November, December, kind of as a larger whole. This is dealing with outdoor storage. The planning commission reviewed the proposed ordinance, conducted the public hearing, and unanimously recommended approval. So with that, staff recommends conducting the first reading of proposed ordinance 1572 and to dispense with the actual reading. Note, a vote to dispense with the actual reading of the ordinance must be unanimous.
Any questions of staff? Chairman Johnson?
We denied the IUP because of noise in the industrial park?
That was one of the reasons listed as a reason for denial, among some others.
Some other, much more important. Yeah, thank you.
Any any other questions of staff? Mayor, no?
Just a follow-up to Councilman Johnson's question. Who is in charge of regulating noise in the state of Minnesota?
The MPCA.
And they have regulations.
They have regulations. It is what we've learned more up to the municipality to enforce those, so.
But they set the regulations.
They set the regulations.
Perfect, thank you.
Any further questions of staff? Hearing none. This is a first reading. Any motion to conduct the first reading and dispense with the actual reading must be unanimous. Any questions?
Mr. President, I'm, oh, oh, I'm just ready to make a motion. I move that we conduct the first reading of proposed ordinance 1572 and dispense with the actual reading.
We have a motion by Stengline, is there a second? Second by Terry. Any discussion? Hearing none. Oh, I'm sorry, Gabe Johnson?
I I'll vote yes because I don't want to hear anybody read it to me, but I'll vote no on this. I I eventually, when it comes to an ordinance before us, I don't think we should be trying to make our industrial park the quietest industrial park in the state of Minne- I just don't think that's like the sales pitch for industry to move in is you have to be quiet when you come here. So I'll be, I I do not support it.
Mayor, no?
I'm going to echo those exact same remarks.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. On the first reading, I believe we'll have a public hearing at the second reading?
Planning commission's already conducted the public hearing.
Oh, planning commission's already had one. Any other comments? Hearing none. On the first reading, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. We'll see in two weeks on that one. Next up is eight, new business 8C, the first reading of proposed ordinance 1573 regulating garage requirements for residential housing units. Mr. Kravik?
Thank you, Mr. President. So as proposed, the ordinance amendment would no longer require a garage for two-to-four unit buildings, while single-family homes would be required to either have a 12-by-20 garage or 10-by-12 shed. Currently, multifamily, five-plus, has no requirements for garages either. The ordinance's intent is to allow for the market to dictate garage construction by removing the garage requirement for one-to-four unit residential buildings. The amendment will reduce construction costs and therefore encourage future housing development. Just a few comments from the commissioners to kind of get a sense on their thoughts. Commissioner Peterson feels it is it is an affordability issue for some people. The issue of leaving stuff outside comes down to the house, the unit, the tenants, and the landlord. He stated that he has built houses for people that wanted to get into home ownership but could not afford the garage immediately, but did want to add it later. So that's kind of one possible scenario in there. Commissioner Duval agreed that the market is going to drive garages for a certain group to build garages, some of the larger homes, to build affordable housing. There needs to be some way to pull costs down by removing walls and slabs. This is the quickest way to make a difference in affordable housing within the city of Brainerd. So with that, the planning commission unanimously recommended approval of propose of the proposed ordinance and held the public hearing. So staff recommends conducting the first reading of proposed ordinance 1573 and to dispense with the actual reading. And note, a vote to dispense with the reading of the ordinance must be unanimous.
Any questions of staff on the garage ordinance? Okay, hearing none. We're looking for a motion to either accept or reject the recommended action of the first reading of proposed ordinance 1573.
Mr. Mr. President, excuse me. I move that we conduct the first reading of proposed ordinance 1573 and dispense with the actual reading.
You may. Motion by Stengline. Any second?
Second.
Second by Terry. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Unanimously, we'll see in two weeks on that one. Item 8D is a resolution for improvement 2316, the South Brainerd resurfacing project ordering in a feasibility report. Jesse Dean?
Thank you, Mr. President. So Bolton Make is looking to start the process for the 2025 South Brainerd resurfacing project. Kind of sort of that process is preparing the feasibility report. The streets kind of included in that resurfacing project is kind of that Buffalo Hills neighborhood north of Buffalo Hills Lane and west of Woodcrest, so all the Ridge Court, kind of all those different streets that are listed in there. So staff is recommending adopting the attached resolution that orders the feasibility report for the South Brainerd resurfacing project.
Any questions of staff? Hearing none. Is there a motion to adopt the attached resolution ordering the feasibility report?
So, second.
Motion by Stunek, second by Stengline. Any discussion? Hearing none. Please call the roll.
O'Day?
Yes.
Stunek?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Stengline?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Chesak?
Yes.
Bevins?
Yes, that resolution is adopted. Item nine is the public forum. Time allocate, this is where time allocated for citizens to bring matters not on the agenda to the attention of the council. We usually like to keep have you keep it to three to five minutes. Anybody who's in the audience who has something that I'd like to have the council know about that we have not discussed this evening, please come forward and state your name and address. And anybody online, star three lets us know you want to speak. Please, your name and address.
My name is Matthew Neese, and I live at 2502 Oak Street.
Thank you. And what's on your mind tonight?
Well, I was wondering about O'Brien Park. Does the parks or the city council have anything that they want to do with it? Because it's just a patch of grass sitting there, not even a basketball court or anything.
When is the next parks meeting? Mr. Dean? Fourth Tuesday. Come to the here, right here. Parks and Parks.
24th.
24th of September.
Okay.
Yep, Mr. Mayor has something. He's our liaison.
Yeah, and actually, if you can connect with Jesse, Jesse, we probably have a plan for the future use of that park. I don't believe there's much improvements being currently looked at for there, but the park board has just went and assessed all the parks and put, what would you call it? Master plan. There you go. That's the word I'm looking for. Master plan together for it. So we do have that documentation.
So come up here anytime before the 24th, take a look at that master plan, so familiarize yourself with what's on the docket and when.
Okay. Then also about the airport for funding and stuff?
Yeah.
Has anyone reached out to Amazon?
Can't have you talk about the airport funding. That's our agenda item this evening. So we're not taking public testimony on the airport.
I'm talking about bringing money into the airport.
I understand. If you've got funding ideas for the airport, we'd love to hear them. If you've got funding ideas for the airport, we'd love to hear them, just drop them off at City Hall.
Yeah, and then go right in the garbage.
Okay. All right, anybody else for public forum? Anybody else for public forum, anybody online for public forum? And I will close the public forum at 9:38, and we will move on to staff reports, we'll start on my right to Fire Chief Holmes.
I have nothing to add, thank you.
And Police Chief?
Nothing to add.
All right, IT GIS Director Sean?
Nothing tonight.
Online, is there anybody?
Nothing this evening, Mr. President.
Thank you, Eric Sharbertier from the HRA. We'll go over here to Connie Hillman, our Finance Director?
Nothing to add.
Jesse Dean, our City Engineer?
Just wanted a quick highlight, uh, we'll be wrapping up the South Brainerd reconstruction project here within the next couple of weeks, uh, but we're also going to be kicking out a handful of our different other construction projects, like the Laurel Street Bridge, uh, the, the parks projects, so we'll have a lot of other different projects that'll be kicking off here shortly, so, uh, still continuing to be a busy fall, uh, through construction season.
Thank you, Community Development Director Kravik?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, just a few items here, so first one, block metrics, uh, the company that, uh, the crypto company that, uh, presented at the joint EDA meetings, council members were present, uh, as well as, uh, Public Utilities Commission members, is looking at potentially purchasing, uh, the VCV LLC and property, and are close to finalizing new plans for 1911 TC Drive, uh, for the EDA to review. Uh, the preliminary plans include a building with immersion miners, uh, it's not finalized yet, but something that, uh, does appear to be moving forward on their end. Uh, also, I have been attempting to hold a Parking Commission meeting, but have not been able to find a quorum of members, so staff will bring options to the next City Council meeting.
Thank you, City Attorney Langill?
Nothing here, thank you.
HR Director Schubert?
Nothing to add.
And our brand spanking new Public Utilities Director, Chris Christopher, what do you prefer? I know what the name badge says.
Uh, anything polite, but Christopher's good.
Christopher Avitz, anything from Public Utilities?
Uh, just want to say, uh, thanks again, uh, for everything, it's been a very interesting week and a half roughly. Uh, just to give you a quick update, uh, for me, I've been working with and meeting with my, uh, managers and supervisors, as well as, uh, trying to get a handle on some of the, uh, current issues, projects, et cetera, as well as, uh, trying to, uh, uh, learn the policies, procedures, statutes, and all that good stuff, and, uh, I think we, uh, are, uh, my colleague in crime may have some additional information to share tonight.
Patrick?
Good evening, Council.
Sorry, you don't have your own microphone.
That's okay, I just wanted to update you, the electric vehicle charging that you guys, uh, authorized the location over here, that has, uh, is not going forward. The ultimately, when the pen hit the paper and started calculating the numbers, it was too expensive, and so the Public Utilities Commission decided not, to not move forward with the electric vehicle charging.
See, he's going to take over the liaison job now, that was my job to tell you that, he took it away from me, just like that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Christopher, anything else?
I know that was about it, but I just wanted to take a, take an opportunity to thank, uh, Patrick for making this a very smooth transition and providing me some of his insight and, uh, doing as best as he could with a mind meld to, uh, share his knowledge and insights, and, uh, he's a very class act, and it's a pleasure to work with him, and want to just thank him for his, uh, past, current, and, uh, future assistance, uh, if so warranted, and that's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, we, we agree, we try and hire Patrick as often as possible. Mr. Broyles, current City Administrator?
Thank you, Mr. President, just a few things, um, the current review period for our annual reviews ended on August 31st, that has been typically done for however many years, I'm not sure. Um, we have assembled, I've assembled a small group of department heads, primarily the directors with the most personnel, and, um, I want to make some changes to that review process, so the short version is, we're going to be moving that review process to a calendar year, as opposed to what it currently is, so we're going to extend the current reporting period by four months, so this current reporting period will be 16 months rather than 12, and I also want to streamline that a little bit, um, at this point, we do quarterly reviews, well, on paper, we do quarterly reviews with our employees, I think that's challenging sometimes, just because it's, it's pretty compressed, so we're going to change that to semiannually, so all employees will get their annual review by the end of first quarter of the calendar year, and they'll get their mid, mid-month review by the end of third quarter in the calendar year, and we're just trying to strike that, that nice balance between making sure these reviews are meaningful and actionable and not overly burdensome, so, um, we've had some really good dialogue in our group, we were getting very close to a template that we're going to use, this is going to be a work in progress, I think ultimately, we want to tie all of our performance objectives back to strategic goals, but that might require some, some more robust foundational documents, we'll work toward that end, so that's ongoing, um, but I just want to let the council know that current reporting period will be extended by four months, the review process, the paperwork will look, look a little bit different, but, uh, I think it's going to be good for the employees. Second, and I, I can relate to Councilman Chesak, my, my, my thunder was stolen, I want to personally thank Patrick, uh, he's been, uh, a source of great counsel for me for the last six months, and he will be missed, so thank you for all your help, Patrick, um, you've made my first six months much more enjoyable than it might have otherwise been. And then lastly, of course, just welcome, Chris, um, we're, we're, it's a pleasure to have you here, looking forward to working with you, and, uh, I think you're going to bring great things to the table, and, uh, welcome aboard, that's all I have, sir.
Thank you, item 11 is the mayor's report, the Honorable Mayor, Dave Bedow.
Oh, well, welcome, Chris, see you later, Patrick.
See you soon, maybe, huh?
Yeah, well, we all know that he's not going anywhere, so, uh, just super fast, I want to say congratulations to all of the parents and teachers for our first day of school here in the Brainerd Lakes area, uh, as a parent of a senior, a first grader, and a pre-K student, uh, we got the entire spectrum covered, so I just want to say thank you to all the parents out there for entrusting our wonderful school district with your children, and thank you to our teachers for all the work that you do, um, I'm sure today was chaotic and long, so, uh, police versus firefighter softball showdown, I don't know if you know or not, but we had some rain, we didn't have some rain, we thought we were going to have some rain, but, but, uh, it went from 88% chance of thunderstorms to not a single drizzle, um, however, we rescheduled the softball game to this Thursday at 6:00 PM, I know that's more difficult once the school season, or the, uh, school year starts, however, this Thursday, 6:00 PM, police versus firefighter showdown, uh, at the Mills Stadium at Memorial Park, and, uh, and the rivalry is brewing, it's getting chippy, it's getting feisty, the, the wait didn't make anything better, so, but we're really excited, I think it's going to be a lot of fun, uh, hope to see you all out there for that, gates open at 5:00, game, uh, excuse me, National Anthem, 6:00 PM sharp, and then lastly, just another, uh, reminder that September 21st is the flapjack festival slash touch a truck, right here, downtown Brainerd, you get to bring the little ones down, they get to feel all of the big rigs, they get to get their hands on the tires, get them dirty, and then go eat flapjacks, so it'll be a ton of fun. What time? Uh, 10:00 to noon, concise this year, it's been a little longer for- Yep, it's going to be a little longer for multiple years, we're going to go get them in, get them out, so, uh, touch a truck and flapjack, 10:00 to noon, uh, let the kids come down, let them have a good time, and, uh, flapjack eating contest, relay, uh, costume contest for best, um, lumberjack, uh, you know, if you get your buffalo plaid, Jesse, I'm looking at you, I'm expecting a buffalo plaid fedora, so, I hope Amazon's got that for you in time, so, uh, but, it's September 21st, 10:00 to noon, right downtown, end of report.
Thank you very much, we'll start with number 12, council member reports, and we'll go ladies first, Kara Terry?
Oh, I feel so honored, uh, a few things, so, um, Mr. Dean, I want to, um, thank you and all of the contractors for the street project down in my neck of the woods around, uh, Bain Park, um, all of the neighbors were very impressed with the level of communication from not only city staff, but also the contractors, did an excellent job, so if you could pass on our thanks, um, I'd really appreciate it. Um, the other things that I have, Chad Robichaud is going to be doing a presentation for our first responders, law enforcement, ambulance personnel, probation officers, social workers, um, and those who are a part of their, uh, families, the, um, event is titled Saving Fam- or Saving Lives, Restoring Families, and Changing Legacies, uh, Thursday, September 19th, from 6:00 to 8:00 at the Gitchy Zibby Center for the Arts, and then another, um, event, we have the Tall Cop Says Stop, um, September 25th, from 6:30 to 8:00 at the Gitchy, um, this is a presentation that provides tools, resources, and training to combat substance abuse, it's for community members, parents, teachers, all sorts of folks, can come and learn about current drug trends in our area, what to look for, um, and how to, um, have effective conversations with folks in your lives around substance use, and then we have another presentation and training by, um, Tall Cop on September 26th, from 9:00 to 4:00 in the Crowing County Land Services Building, the audience for this training is for professionals, those who work with, uh, individuals and families who might be experiencing substance use disorder issues, that's all I have.
Thank you, Tiffany Stengline?
Uh, yeah, so, had a Region Five meeting, and, uh, just thought I should maybe highlight their work with the Regional Food Business Center, uh, it's a USDA program administered, one of 12 in the nation, um, so, Region Five is, is doing ours, uh, and provides, um, assistance to increase value added in the, the food supply chain, um, so, wanted to mention that, and then also, I know that Jesse had mentioned it before, but just in case anybody didn't get it written down, on the 10th, MnDOT is having an open house, uh, to talk about 210 and 371, uh, the public one is from 4:00 to 6:00 PM, so that's-
What date?
Tuesday, September 10th, 4:00 to 6:00 PM at MnDOT and Baxter, it'll be a great time. If you seen some of the plans, you'd appreciate it.
Anything else?
No, that'll do it.
Chief Stunick?
Nothing.
Jeff Chesak?
Yeah, the EV stations aren't a go anymore. They, uh, they gotta grant money, and then after the utilities did the numbers, it's a lot of money, over a hundred thousand, so, um, they didn't see the, um, uh, cost-benefit analogy, or the return on investment, I guess, is what you, so, yeah, that's, that's all I got.
Thank you, Chairman Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. President, I have two and a half things, as my fine constituent was going to say, he, he called me with this idea, and I've done a little bit of research and reading on it, and I think it's a really good idea, but, Amazon does lease out spaces at airports, and hangars, and distribution at airports, they fly in goods and ship them out of airports across the country, so I think it would be a good idea for the, once the county takes it over, that they look into it, and maybe they could get some significant Amazon revenue, uh, I think that's a good one, and secondly, I noticed the mayor has the O'Brien Park master plan up, so if you talk to him afterwards, he can show you a picture.
Trying to find it.
After, we, we've got four closed session items.
Oh, nah, they're going to want to come back a different day.
We'll get it, we'll get it to you.
And, and then finally, my thunder's been stolen, but I just want to thank Patrick, you know, it's been a pretty crazy year that he didn't have planned out, where he came in when we needed a city administrator, and, and he led the city with great leadership skills, and he thought he was done, then we needed him to help us continue with the union negotiations, and he thought he was done, and then we needed an interim Public Utilities Director, and he said yes at every turn, and he did it professionally with great leadership every time, and I just appreciate you being here and appreciated working with you, Patrick.
We'll find something else for him.
Thanks.
Union negotiations are eternal. Chairman Dave?
I don't really have anything to add, I just want to echo those sentiments, thank you, Patrick, uh, I don't know how much longer you're, you're going to keep coming to these meetings, they're pretty fun, so probably for a while, but, we'll see you in a couple of weeks, I'm sure.
Tonight was really fun, okay, and I will close out by, uh, first of all, thanking Gabe Johnson for running the meeting a couple of weeks ago when I was away, uh, a special shout-out to the Police Department, uh, instead of a Northside residence picnic this year like we've done for the last 25 years, it was a citywide one, and Krista Sukup said it could not have been done without the help of the Police Department, the Police Department really took the, took the bull by the horns and, and, and ran that thing, and she wanted to make sure, thank you, thank you, thank you, it was phenomenal, and last, uh, and it's been said numerous times, but it deserves to be said one more time, thank you, Patrick, you're a great friend to the city of Brainerd, so, thank you, I appreciate all your efforts. The last item is an adjournment, and we'll be adjourning to four separate items, the first one is a closed session per Minnesota Statute 13D.05 subdivision 3C 2, to discuss temporary and permanent easement appraisals. The second item on our closed session is pursuant to Minnesota Statute 13D.05 subdivision 3C 1 and 3, to discuss partials 401, 60519, and 413, 61081. Our third closed session agenda item is Labor Negotiation Strategy Session pursuant to Minnesota Statute 13D.03 subdivision 1B, to prepare for negotiations with the IBEW31, Public Utilities, and the final item will be to adjourn to closed session pursuant to Minnesota Statute 13D.05 subdivision 3A, to conduct City Administrator Broyles' six-month performance review. We, can I please get a motion- So mo. -to adjourn by Chesak to those items, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Stunick, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we will take a six-minute break and then reconvene at 9:00, in closed session, so if you're-